All righty, good evening Commissioners and over to you Chair Harrington.
Good evening everyone and for those of you who have braved the weather of our great outdoors to join us this evening, thank you because I understand it is a wee bit nasty out there. So welcome to the Tuesday, November 19th, 2024 Washington County Board of Commissioners meeting. Clerk Moss, could you do us the honor please?
Certainly Chair Harrington, the Washington County Board of Commissioners also meeting as the Board of Directors for Clean Water Services and all other county service districts is now meeting this regular session, November 19th, 2024. Commissioner Treese?
Here.
Commissioner Rogers?
Sure.
Vice Chair Fai?
Present.
Chair Harrington?
Here.
And I'll announce Commissioner Willie as excused for tonight.
Yes, he is away on vacation. We wish him well. So the next item on our agenda this evening is public communication. This is an opportunity for you members of our community to come and share your thoughts with the board for up to two minutes an individual, for a total of 10 minutes for the group at the beginning of the meeting. Clerk Moss, do we have anyone who wishes to do so?
We do. So we have four people signed up. We have Mary Chalkopoulos followed by Jenny Campath.
Feel free to start at any time and we'll catch up with your written material.
Okay. Chair Harrington and Commissioners, I'm Mary Chalkopoulos, a resident of Washington County for 23 years.
Hang on one second. Could we get the mic turned on and the timer? Okay, could you reset the timer to two minutes please? Okay, go ahead now.
Testing.
Oh, much better, okay.
Chair Harrington and Commissioners, I'm Mary Chalkopoulos, a resident of Washington County for 23 years. For several years, I delivered lean manufacturing consulting programs and services to industry. Lean manufacturing is a production philosophy that increases efficiency and quality and eliminates process waste. One tool of this philosophy is called cellular or decentralized manufacturing, clearly the opposite of centralized manufacturing. Imagine a widget production plant with a centralized system. Thousands of widgets run through one process with centralized equipment and lots of stress on one system. This approach is rigid and very vulnerable. If an error is made, thousands of bad widgets may be produced before they're caught, or in case of an outage or equipment failure, all of production comes to a halt. A decentralized system distributes production into smaller work cells which may be geographically apart. Errors are caught quickly, so quality is improved. Equipment failure in one area does not impact the entire system. Cells are more nimble and responsive with faster throughput times and productivity. Applying these concepts to elections, processing all countywide ballots in one location with equipment software used only during elections yields stress on the system, leading to equipment failures, decreased ballot security, and increased errors. In the case of elections where trust matters, this approach has limited citizenship participation, no transparency, and nowhere are errors more obvious than in signature verification where thousands of signatures need to be verified after the fact. A decentralized ballot counting system at the precinct level requires no complicated equipment to fail and fewer process steps. It's more transparent and verifiable as ID and signatures can be checked before the fact. It encourages citizen participation and builds trust and confidence that their vote matters. Above all, this system has 200 years of proven history in Oregon. Thank you.
Chair Harrington and Commissioners, my name is Jenny Campath. I've been a Washington County resident for 32 years. As you may know, I ran for county commissioner, position one during the May 2024 election cycle. Had I won that race, I would be sitting with you this coming January and I can assure you, I'd be doing a better job listening to the community than you're doing. I'm here this evening to speak to you regarding responsibility and accountability. I've been observing and listening to the citizens who have been providing testimony regarding election integrity over the last several weeks. I have seen them ask you repeatedly for a work session and for the opportunity to discuss their findings with you. I've seen them present you with information, election anomalies, and data that frankly dispels the theory that our current election system is safe and secure. My question to you is, why have you not invited them to a work session? Why have you not engaged them in a discussion where everyone can work together as fellow citizens to improve things in our county? These people have been providing you with facts and telling you that some of these issues for weeks. They are coming to you for assistance and representation, but you have chosen not to respond. As county officers, you have the duty and responsibility to take action based on what you have heard, things that include violations to federal law. Elections are a civil rights matter. Ineligible votes nullify valid votes and can have far-reaching consequences, including voter disenfranchisement and erosion of trust in the electoral process. Have you considered that not taking action to rectify the election issues that have been presented to you regarding fraud, falsehoods, and anomalies within our county elections may leave you legally liable beyond the umbrella of the county treasurers? Thank you.
All right, next we have Bob Terry and Dale Feek.
Go ahead, Mr. Terry.
Thank you very much. Well, good evening Chair Harrington and Commissioners, and I hope you enjoyed your one week off, or your day off of the week anyway. But I want to talk to you tonight about ranked choice voting, as well as some other issues as it relates to our elections. First of all, with ranked choice voting, you know, I want you to make note that it did fail in Alaska, Colorado, Idaho, Nevada, and Oregon. It was already banned in Missouri, joining Louisiana, Alabama, Mississippi, Oklahoma, Kentucky, Montana, South Dakota, Tennessee, Florida, and after this election, including various states, four of them in fact, on top of the ones I mentioned, that also banned the variation of ranked choice voting, which included just the top four. So they're all back to real voting. Not suggesting that we were trying to do RCV, but we all know it was in the neighborhood. We also know that there was discussions between our county and that county to consider it. Ranked choice voting is worse than what we have today. Today, we have electronic equipment and electronic voting by US Mail and Voting. That is the worst that could possibly happen to our free election system where one man, one vote counts. You've heard us talk about it here, all the time that we have had, as much time as we have had, and it's filled with its anomalies and fraud, and the cost that we've been able to track down is much greater than in-person voting, in precinct, and period. And we can show those numbers at some point time later, if we had the time to spend the time with you all, to show you all of the anomalies, failures, fraud, and anomalies that is taking place today in our election. I'm still looking for that, and we all are too, and asking for a meeting of either the board at a work session or any other kind of session you want to call it. Thank you.
Chair Harrington and Commissioners, I'm Dale Feek from Forest Grove. I sent you an email. I didn't give you a handout today, and I'm going to quote some of the things I sent to you. This is from a short interview with Timothy Snyder, the author of On Freedom. Trump's picks suggest an attempt to make government dysfunctional by his proposed appointments to his cabinet. These appointments are not just poor choices in traditional sense. These appointments, each of them individually, is historically bad, but taken together, these are not people who are going to be bad at their jobs in some sort of normal sense. Taken together, these appointments suggest an attempt to actually make the American government dysfunctional, to make it fall apart, to pervert it, to have it do things that it is not supposed to do until it's not capable of doing anything at all. It's not just that they're totally unqualified, it's that they're anti-qualified, that they're qualified to do the opposite thing that they're supposed to do. What do we do now? We've got to maintain our own sense of what is good. We have to maintain our own vocabulary. We can't normalize the other things that people are doing. If it's grotesque, we have to call it out as grotesque. We have to remember that we're the same people we were before the election. Our values are the same, they were before the election. The things we prioritize are the same, they were before the election. So we do the things, we have to do the things to make the world around us better. We have to take our sense of shock and say, okay, shock doesn't license my adapting ourselves to the new thing. Shock means that something very wrong has happened, and we have to remember to think, to do what is right and start from there. I also want to quote from Robert Hutchins, former president of University of Chicago. "Justice and freedom, discussion and criticism, intelligence and character, these are the indispensable ingredients of the democratic state. We can be rich and powerful without them, but not for long."
Thank you. Is there any other member in the auditorium that we should provide comment that didn't get a chance to sign up? Not seeing anyone in the room. Is there any member online that we should provide public comment for up to two minutes? Give you just a moment to utilize raise hand function. Not seeing any hands. Chair Harrington.
Thank you Clerk Moss, and with that, we'll move to tonight's consent agenda, which I believe consists of 19 items. One set of minutes, five items from Clean Water Services, one item from the Office of Community Development, one from Health and Human Services, two items from the Sheriff's Office, and six items from Land Use and Transportation, followed up by one item from Human Resources. What are the wishes of the Commission regarding tonight's consent agenda?
Hope to accept.
Second.
All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you Commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously four to zero. Next, we'll move on to presentations, and I would like to invite our expert staff from our housing world to give us a quarterly update on the Affordable Housing Bond and supportive housing services work here by Washington County. Welcome.
Good evening Commissioners. For the record, my name is Molly Rogers, and I'm the Director of Housing Services. Whew, it's been quite a year. It's also been quite a quarter, but I wanted to say it's been about a year since I've started serving in this capacity, and I could not be more proud of the team that we have built here in the Department of Housing Services. And I wanted to express my personal appreciation of this board for your unwavering support and guidance. I am joined tonight by our unstoppable Assistant Director Larson, in charge of our Homeless Services Division, and has been a stalwart champion of our SHS work. And I'm also joined tonight are brilliant and newish, but not so new, Lisa Verone, Division Manager for our Real Estate Team, who joined us about five months ago and has already gotten our pipeline back on track, and is making incredible progress as we move our projects forward. So here, I'm going to turn it over to Assistant Director Larson.
Thank you Director Rogers. Good evening. For the record, my name is Jess Larson. I use she/her pronouns. Pleased to be with you tonight, providing this quarterly update. It will also be a bit of an overlapping annual update because as you know, we've just released our annual report, and we're looking forward to distributing those printed copies to you all very shortly. And this is a story that will be a part of that report, and we're excited to share today because you've seen Russell's story in the past, in this wonderful journey of building out our system of care here in Washington County. Russell was unsheltered for many years in Washington County. He's standing here in front of our Bridge Shelter in Hillsborough where he stayed, receiving support and services in emergency shelter until he could get housed. And today, the big update is that Russell has been living in his own apartment now. All of these interventions and services and support, creating stable housing for him, and funded with the Supportive Housing Services measure. So a great continued story of success for Russell and our system of care that we're building. Next slide. Some of the highlights from our annual report are that we indeed expended the entire budget, far surpassing the expectations, which is a testament to our partners and their abilities to house our community and expand their staffing quickly to provide the services. So they were able to help access all that budgeted eviction, sorry, rent assistance and case management capacity, leading us to full utilization of those resources last year. And the conversations underway this year of how we make sure we can have a sustainable system of care, because we can't surpass the budgeted amount in future years. But with those resources and contracts and those partnerships, our Supportive Housing Services system touched more than 10,000 people last year, from outreach workers to shelter providers to supportive housing placements, the Recreparative Care Program partnering with our hospital partners, you know, all of these different, the Housing Careers Program, helping people get back on their feet and paying their own rent through good-paying jobs. All of these programs together served more than 10,000 individuals across Washington County. It's really tremendous system of care. And 12,000 people moved into stable housing. So those were people who were at any one of the points in the journey of our system of care, and they were able to move out of homelessness into stable housing. We also had more than, did I say 12,000? Let me correct the record and say 1,200. Thank you all. 1,200 people moved into stable housing, and 1,800 people moved through our shelter program. So you can just see the utilization of the system of care underway right now, and meeting very urgent need in our community.
Just last year.
Just last year, that's right. Thank you Chair. So moving into some of the details from our first quarter, so July, August, and September of program year four, here's a quick snapshot. Sorry, I apologize. The colors aren't coming through very clearly for you today, so you might pay attention to the numbers, especially for those in the audience. I'm not sure how it's appearing on the screens. Okay, okay, excellent. So these are annual goals that you see in the darker color. So that's what we're working towards by the end of the fiscal year, and where we are at in the first three months of this fiscal year. So not exactly a quarter of the way there, but that is always to be expected because we're still hiring that capacity to meet those goals and bringing on newly trained staff to start housing folks. So we always see each year the placement capacity increase over the course of the program year. So this is a good start for the first three years of the program year. Next, we'll just quickly highlight for you some of the non-metric goals that we've set. We have first the system capacity goals, and then we'll go into specific racial equity goals. Some, like hosting the listening session, this is just a high-level overview. It's not all of the separate goals for our system in this program year, but some have already been achieved. We really enjoyed those community listening sessions where we could hear directly from impacted community how they are experiencing our system, and really put our housing, or sorry, our advisory body members in the listening seat, so that they, as they help advise us on our various housing advisory groups, have that direct story from the individuals who are accessing the program. So it was a really interactive night, as you can see in the picture featured here. We are continuing to increase our system alignment with our healthcare partners. You'll be hearing from us in a couple of weeks about our Transitional Housing NOFA, which has completed, and we're ready to bring forward the staff recommended awards. And then we are also expanding our utilization of case conferencing. This is a practice that's become a national best practice, using by-name lists to work through the individuals who are experiencing the most barriers in our system to get back into stable housing or just off the streets. And these targeted case conferencing, sometimes with health providers, sometimes with outreach providers, sometimes with the shelter providers, are really helping our partners move their participants through our system to stability. So those are some system capacity goals, and our next slide overview some of those racial equity goals specific for this program year. Most especially, just want to highlight that we've launched our Lived Experience Committee, that are people who've experienced homelessness, providing direct guidance and recommendations to staff technical work, and also lifting up that guidance to inform the overall homeless solutions advisory body work. And our continued work on various equity analyses, reaching out to specific impacted populations where we continue to see disparities in our work, especially reaching Asian-American households, and increasing the quality of our service to non-English-speaking participants in our system. So you'll hear more about those programmatic, the progress in those programmatic efforts over the course of the year. Next slide. Many of you were, I unfortunately missed it yesterday, but I understand it was a grand event celebrating the new opening of our Beaverton Permanent Shelter, expanding capacity from 40 beds in a temporary location. If it wasn't said yesterday, it's worth saying again. Folks have been sleeping on mats and getting transportation to places where they can go get showers, because this was not a purpose-built shelter. We were doing the best we can. And yesterday, the community opened a purpose-built shelter that will expand our capacity to more than 60 people on any, or to 60 people on any given night, and provide better services to folks who are staying in the program so they can get onto stable housing. So we're thrilled about this capital investment coming to fruition, and you're going to hear more of those stories over the coming years, as many of those initial capital investments, access centers, shelters, and soon transitional housing start to come online in our community. We are having difficult and important conversations about the realities of having reached the capacity of the Supportive Housing Services revenue as it exists today. You've been supporting us and guiding us along that way, and we are continuing to have those conversations around how do we right-size and balance our system? So again, people can move through those systems, through the system from unsheltered homelessness to stable housing, however is right, best meant to serve and meet their needs. We are using the guiding principles you've helped us to refine, and we'll be continuing to have that iterative conversation as we prepare for the next year's proposed budget. And our Homeless Solutions Advisory Council will be helping support us in that work, along with, of course, your direction, and our community-based providers who are providing these services in partnership with the department. If you haven't heard, we transitioned two wonderful staff who'd been with us. Catherine Galian and Ally Alexandra Sheridan are on to their next professional journeys, and so we've just actually closed recruitments for two new branch managers who will be joining Nicole Sting on our team and working to help lead up the, to those two important branches in our department. So more news to come in the coming months as we announce those new leaders to the division. And then, of course, and like actually happening right now, we are sharing the wonderful news of this success of our annual report and the system of care we've built through these SHS resources in many places, especially our city councils. And our colleagues are at the Hillsborough City Council tonight, providing a variation of this report. So that is another part of our next steps, is getting out those annual reports to our partners, to the community, and helping continue to tell the success and the impact of these important resources. I think that might be my last slide. Ah, no. Speaking of the impact of these resources, let's end here for our homeless services update tonight. So since the beginning of the measure, nearly 3,000 people have moved from homelessness into stable housing. It's really, really tremendous, and every week, we are housing more people in our permanent supportive housing and rapid rehousing programs and other programs that flexibly respond to their needs. And because of these resources, we can't, we can't highlight this enough, while national trends in homelessness are increasing, it's an anomaly that here in Washington County, we actually saw a significant decline in unsheltered homelessness. And it's because of these resources to help people get housed and help people seek shelter that we've been able to bring people in from the cold into safe places to sleep and better places to go home soon. So thank you for your tremendous support and championship. Happy to provide this Q1 update and take your questions, but first, I'm going to pivot over to my colleague Lisa to walk us through the great work that we've also been doing on the Affordable Housing Bond.
Thank you. Good evening Commissioners. I'm Lisa Veron. I use she/her pronouns, and thank you for having us here tonight to share our successes. In this portion of the presentation, I'm going to update you on our progress in the construction of affordable housing units utilizing the Metro Affordable Housing Bonds. So this slide shows how Washington County is exceeding its bond production targets. For total housing units, the county anticipates 958 units will be funded through the bond programs, of which 697 are complete and 261 are in progress. Overall, we expect to exceed all of our production goals in every category: total housing, family housing, 30% MFI housing, and permanent supportive housing. Of the 958 units, 497 or 52% are family-sized, 368 units or 38% are rented at 30% MFI, and 157 units are dedicated to permanent supportive housing. Overall, for each category, the county is on track to exceed its production targets, and that's something we can be really proud of. This slide is a summary of the Metro Bond project by location and completion dates. So everything in the green is completed, in the yellow, almost there, and the red, still in progress. To date, we have nine projects that have completed construction, and there's a geographic dispersment that includes four properties in Tigard, three in Aloha, and individual developments in Beaverton, Cornelius, Forest Grove, and Tualatin. So a great job at getting that dispersment across the county in key areas where we're having needs for affordable housing. Since our last quarterly report, we've achieved several wonderful milestones for the Metro Bond developments. In this picture, you'll see the Plaza Los Amigos grand opening, which several of you attended and celebrated with us. So thank you for not only supporting these projects from the DAS, but for coming out to these events and being a part of these important milestones. This grand opening was early fall. For Al Tora, we, that project is in lease-up. It's 92% leased, and construction is complete. So there will be a grand opening in February 2025, and we hope to see you there. So in summary, all our projects are on track. Plan Bect Gardens is pre-leasing, will be completed in January. Woodland Hearth is having its financial close and starting construction next month, and Aloha 209 submitted its funding application to OHCS, and all of our housing bonds are presently allocated.
I would be remiss if I didn't remind you all to join us for our annual housing forum this Friday at the Wingspan Event Center, and we're going to be honored by a couple special guests. Congresswoman Bonamici will be sharing a few words, as well as State Senator Libber, Kate Libber, will be joining one of our panels, talking about the intersection of homelessness and behavioral health. Unfortunately, Senator Jama was going to join us on our other panel on the importance of affordable housing preservation, but now he's been elected to Senate, House Majority Leader, and has had to send his regrets. But we can't wait to see you all there, and of course, we have, we'll be hearing from the chair, and really making sure where our legislative priorities are elevated, and of course, all the incredible progress we've made here in this community.
You are nonetheless having the two panels still, right?
Yes.
Very interesting panel, so hope everyone can join us who's interested. So Commissioners, questions or comments first?
I just want to say thank you for working so hard.
I just want to say thank you for working so hard, and thank you for just, just continuing this good work. Our community is a better place for our neighbors that are homeless and for all, all of our community as a whole. So my hat is off to you. I know, I know exactly how hard you've been working, and it's not easy. Thank you.
Commissioner Fai, Commissioner Rogers?
I would, pardon me, I would echo that. It's interesting to see all the progress that's been made. It's been very difficult, and I understand. So I won't get to see some of those that are finishing up in Tigard, because my term will be up, but thank you for all that you've done during my time here, which has just been a very brief period of time, and so I, I do appreciate it.
That means you get invited to all the future events, too.
There you go.
Commissioner Fai?
Thank you, Chair Harrington. Thank you for your great presentation, and thank you for all the conversations we've been engaged as a board around supportive housing services and where do we go from here. I just came off, I just came on the mic to give a shout out to Jess Larson in this conversation. We've been having a lot of robust conversation about supportive housing, and my journey at the county started with you addressing this. So today, you popped into my mind when we were having that long discussion about supportive housing services, revenue, and the measure and, and the journey ahead. So I just wanted to give you a shout out and say thank you for your leadership, and thank you, Molly, and thank you, Lisa, for this wonderful presentation. You shared great numbers. It really is a testament to the leadership that exists within this county and within this board, and really, we're helping people getting off the streets, you know, and thank you for saying yes to the idea that the streets should not be a waiting room for supportive or housing, permanent housing. So thank you for saying yes to that, and thank you for housing so many people in Washington County.
Well, thank you, Commissioners. I'll just come in as sweep. I'm really super proud of everyone in the Housing Department with all aspect of our work, whether it's public housing, affordable housing, permanent supportive housing, supportive housing services. You just have done incredible work, and I join my colleagues in being very grateful for each and every one of you and for how you work, not only across Washington County as a county government, but with all of our partners, our city partners, our nonprofit partners, anyone who wants to help in this endeavor. What incredible year-three results for the Supportive Housing Services program, and wow. We still have more to look forward to on affordable housing as well. For SHS, congratulations for making the front page of The Oregonian today, second time in pretty short order this fiscal year. And that article shows the positive results from all three counties here in our metropolitan area. I was so super proud of you on Monday at the opening of the Beaverton Permanent Shelter. I want to thank Commissioner Trese for her real-time, in-real-time pinch hitting to deliver my talking points, as sadly, I discovered during the process of listening to the other speakers, that I didn't think I would achieve my own expectations for telling the county's story while also grappling with the harsh reality of the approach that Metro is putting us through to consider reductions. So I really appreciate your having done so and done so, so well to tell our county's story. And I want to give a shout out to Jessie Adams. As I know, the Beaverton Permanent Shelter was a big project that she focused on. She was our point person for seeing that shelter through from idea and working with the city to really encourage them to lean into the need of a permanent shelter, to continue to work with the Beaverton team. It's a lot to buy an existing building, to put all of the funding puzzle together, and Mayor Beatty just did, exhibited extraordinary leadership in securing federal funding, state funding, our funding, and Metro funding. So it's a wonderful result. As you say, purpose-built, it's, it's tremendous. I was amazed how quiet it was walking through. So really, very proud of their efforts. And as we move forward, hoping that we will continue to have the operational dollars to support the Hillsborough-Beaverton shelter, though Metro is putting that at risk. So thank you again for sharing these results with us. We look forward to your presentations and all of our problem-solving together in order to continue to support our community members in helping everyone have the opportunity to thrive. Thank you very much, and drive home safely this evening. All right. Next, we're going to move on to public hearings, and our first one is related to an administrative policy and manual. And with all ordinances, I'm going to ask our, well, ask my colleagues for a motion to read Ordinance Number 904 by title only.
Second?
All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously, four to zero. Ms. Courtney Duke-Dreason, could you do us the honors, please?
Yes, Madam Chair. Ordinance Number 904, an ordinance amending the Washington County Code relating to administrative authority and the administrative manual.
Thank you, and I'd like to turn it over to Lisa Takich, our Human Resources Officer, to take us through, ooh, sorry.
You're fine. I'm just going to interrupt and take it over for Lisa.
Thank you very much. Erin Calvert, take it away.
Good evening, Chair Harrington and Commissioners. We have prepared a brief staff report on the topic of Ordinance 904 for you, for the second reading and public hearing. The project team, as you mentioned, included Chief Human Resources Officer Lisa Takich, interim County Counsel Courtney Duke-Dreason, and myself, for the record, Assistant County Administrator Erin Calvert, with a lot of project support from Brenda Bartlett. And as you recall, this item was presented to your Board at work session on October 15th, and then on October 22nd, at your business meeting, the ordinance was read by title only, and the second reading and public hearing, of course, was set for today's date, November 19th. And with that, I'll turn it over to Lisa Takich to review the content.
Thank you. Yes, we're all split up. So good coordination, everyone. Good evening, Chair, Board of County Commissioners. My name is Lisa Takich, and I'm the Chief Human Resources Officer for Washington County, and I am pleased to present to you tonight on the adoption of Ordinance Number 904, amending Washington County Code relating to the administrative authority and administrative manual. Just a few brief slides, and I'm already messing up the clicker. That's my, that's my shtick. All right. And so the proposed ordinance would amend two of the sections of the Washington County Code. The first one is 2.04.100, which delegates specific authority to the county administrator. And then the second code section is 2.04.110, which provides for the adoption of an administrative manual that prescribes in pertinent part details of procedure and policy for the operation of the county. So just by way of some general background, the Board adopted Administrative Policies 101 and 102 back on September 6th of 2016. Those policies govern the adoption, revision, and revocation of administrative policies and procedures generally, and is our, is our current process. These policies are consistent with Washington Code 2.04, wherein the Board of County Commissioner approval is required to adopt, revise, or repeal an administrative policy. The majority of these administrative policies that come before your Board are administrative in nature, and the approval of which could be delegated to the county administrator to ensure efficient use of the Board's and the county's time and resources. So with that, the proposed ordinance, Number 904, would change Washington County Code Section 2.04.100 to delegate the approval, revision, and repeal of administrative policies from the Board to the county administrator. And the proposed ordinance would also make changes to Washington County Code Section 2.04.110, providing for a periodic timeframe for which the Board to review the administrative manual while maintaining the Board's ability to revise administrative manual as may be required. And so that concludes my presentation. I hope it's helpful to you, this information for this public hearing, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Commissioners, do you have any questions regarding this staff report? Seeing none, I'd like to open a public hearing. Clerk Moss, do we have anyone who wishes to do so?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I did not see anyone sign up in the act before the meeting. Would anyone in the auditorium wish to provide a public comment on this public hearing? As you've heard the report from staff, give you just a moment to stand up, get my attention start coming forward. Not seeing any in the room. Would any member online via Zoom wish to provide a public comment on this public hearing? As you've heard the staff report, just give you a moment to utilize raise hand function. Not seeing any hands. Chair Harrington.
Thank you, Clerk Moss. And with that, I'll close today's public hearing and ask for a motion to adopt Ordinance 904, an ordinance amending the Washington County Code relating to administrative authority and the administrative manual. So moved.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Clerk Moss, could you take the roll call, please?
Certainly, Madam Chair. Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Trese?
Aye.
Vice Chair Fai?
Aye.
Chair Harrington?
Yes. The ordinance passes unanimously, four to zero. Next, we'll move on to our second ordinance of this evening. Do we have a motion to read Ordinance Number 897 by title only?
Second?
All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously, four to zero. Ms. Duke-Dreason, could you do us the honors, please?
Yes, Madam Chair. Ordinance Number 897, an ordinance amending the Comprehensive Framework Plan for the Urban Area Rural Natural Resource Plan and Bull Mountain Community Plan to reflect the River Terrace 2.0 urban growth boundary expansion area.
Welcome, staff. Could we have a staff report, please?
Thank you, Chair Harrington and Commissioners. Teresa Churniak, Principal Community Planner. Todd Borkowitz will give the presentation, and I'm here for questions.
Good evening, Chair Harrington, Commissioners. I'm Todd Borkowitz, Senior Planner in Community Planning with the Department of Land Use and Transportation. And tonight, we'll be continuing the hearing on Ordinance 897, which would formally transfer the UGB expansion of Tigard's River Terrace 2.0 from the rural to the urban area. So here's the approximately 500-acre River Terrace 2.0 UGB expansion area. It's adjacent to Roy Rogers Road, south of Shoals Ferry Road, and north of Beaufort Road. As you may recall, Metro Council approved this expansion through a UGB land exchange in May 2023. The Department of Land Conservation and Development granted approval. So Ordinance 897 proposes to amend county planning documents to reflect the UGB expansion. The Board held its first hearing on this ordinance on October 3rd, 2023. During that meeting, the county received testimony opposing the ordinance, and the Board voted to continue the hearing so that staff could, so that staff could provide a full response to that testimony. So on January 23rd, 2024, the Board continued the hearing to November 19th today to allow for completion of the update to the county's Significant Natural Resources Program. Two weeks ago, on November 5th, the Board adopted a engrossed ordinance 901 and 902, which completed the update to this program, and Ordinance Number 897 can now move forward. So engrossment of this ordinance is now required. The recent Board adoption of a engrossed ordinance 901 codified a new inventory of mapped Gulf Five resources. In part, that ordinance included the adding of this new inventory for the River Terrace 2.0 area to the Bull Mountain Community Plan. In October, the Board adopted Ordinance 903, that in part removed parking maximums from all community plans. So the Board adoption of these two ordinances now requires engrossment of Ordinance 897 to reflect the county's current comprehensive plan documents. A minor text change to the Bull Mountain Community Plan, as described in the accompanying staff report, is also needed. So given this, we recommend that the Board conduct the public hearing on Ordinance 897, and at the conclusion of the hearing, order engrossment of the ordinance to reflect the changes described. We recommend that the Board continue the hearing to January 7th and 28th, 2025, to direct staff to prepare, mail, and mail the notice of the amendments consistent with the requirements of Chapter 10 of the County Charter. And that concludes our presentation. We're happy to answer any questions.
Commissioners, do you have any questions on this staff report? Seeing none, I'd like to open the public hearing. Clerk Moss?
Thank you, Chair Harrington. I did not see anyone in the auditorium sign up before the meeting. Would any member in the auditorium wish to provide a public comment on this public hearing? As you've heard the staff report from staff, give you just a moment to stand up, get my attention start coming forward. Not seeing any in the room. Would any member online via Zoom wish to provide a public comment on this public hearing? As you've heard the staff report, give you just a moment to utilize raise hand function. Not seeing any hands. Chair Harrington.
All right. Well, with that, I'll close tonight's public hearing and ask for a motion to order engrossment of Ordinance 897 to include the changes described in the staff report and to continue the hearing to January 7th of 2025 and January 28th of 2025, and direct staff to prepare and mail notice of the amendments consistent with requirements of Chapter 10 of the County Code. So moved. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Clerk Moss, could you take roll call, please?
Certainly, Chair Harrington. Commissioner Trese?
Yes.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Vice Chair Fai?
Aye.
Chair Harrington?
Yes. Thank you. We will proceed as follows on a unanimous vote, four to zero. Next, we'll move on to our action items, and we have before us the opportunity to adopt the 2025 federal legislative agenda and the 2025 state legislative agenda, and this is for both Washington County and Clean Water Services. And we have, as always, our brilliant staff members here to give us a staff report.
I'm stealing this mic. Good afternoon, or good evening, Board. It's lovely to see you again. As you all know, I am Erin Doyle, the Senior Government Relations Manager, and I'll let Carly introduce herself.
Good evening, Board. I'm Carly Silva Gabrielson, one of your Government Relations Managers.
And good evening. I am Tracy Rainey, Government Relations Manager for Clean Water Services.
As you noted, we are here to present our proposed 2025 state and federal legislative agendas for your consideration and action tonight. We are asking that you adopt what is drafted and included in the packet as the longer version of this PowerPoint slide. We do this every year, changing based on the needs and the goals of your Board, our executive leadership team here at the county and at Clean Water Services, as well as the subject matter experts in all of our departments and our partners who help us provide the services to the county, and that's what we focus on in our legislative agendas. As you likely, as you may recall, I too will mess up the clicker the first time. We will first discuss the federal legislative agenda. For the county, the way we approach development of a legislative agenda at the federal level is set based on guiding principles, because the federal legislative process works in a way we control slightly less and have less direct input on, but we need to set up principles so that our federal lobby team out in Washington DC, as well as your staff and yourselves, when we go and speak to our federal delegation, have principles on which we approach policy conversations and the needs of the county. With that, I'm going to do this every time, so I should probably set that down. We are recommending to your Board that we continue the use of the 2024 principles to allow the flexibility to allow the flexibility to address the concepts that come forward at the federal level. It's far more reactionary, but it gives us the basis on which to approach our delegation with our needs. But then, we've made two significant changes to the drafted agenda. One is in the description of how we talk about Washington County and how we work with our delegation to meet the needs and shared goals of providing services for the growth and investment in Washington County. The second recommended changes are to add two principles to directly allow the county to flex our skills in meeting the needs of the community through housing and through behavioral health services. And with that, I will turn it over to Tracy.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you so much for having us this evening, and we are very excited to present this final legislative agenda for Clean Water Services. On this slide, you'll see the proposed federal guiding principles for Clean Water Services. We have four of those, similar to what Erin's just described. These are higher-level items that allow us to be more flexible and to be responsive to legislation that we may encounter and that we continue to work on. So these, again, just being more high-level, and I'll get into the more specific priorities on the next slide unless there's any comments or questions. Okay, so we have seven total proposed federal priorities for your consideration and adoption. Certainly, we will be working extensively on advancing seismic modifications for Scoggins Dam. This remains a priority and will continue to remain a priority until that project is complete. Advancing water reuse opportunities, you are going to also see this reflected in our state legislative agenda, but it is incredibly important for us and the permit. Ongoing, we will always be talking about investments in our nation's water infrastructure. We've seen a lot of great progress in this area, but certainly, we need a lot more investment in our especially aging infrastructure. And then on this slide, finally, you've got the federal investment in water ratepayer assistance, so continuing the federal program that was first established in 2021. And I will move on to the final three federal priorities. Supporting, so funding for ensuring effective management of Wapato Lake National Wildlife Refuge. This is an ongoing priority that we continue to have on our agenda. Funding for agricultural conservation incentives and programs, so the work that we do with agricultural partners in the region that, again, relates back to our permit and is creating a lot of win-win-win scenarios. And then finally, advocating for policies that are protective of the environment and human health related to emerging contaminants, but while making sure that we are protecting utility ratepayer dollars. And with, I think I'm handing this back to Erin.
Yep. So we'll switch gears now into the state legislative agenda, and we're hopeful that we'll be quite successful in pulling in the resources the county needs to do its work. As a reminder to your Board, there are three separate parts to the county piece of the legislative agenda. There are generalized guiding principles, the key among which is no unfunded mandates. These allow us to be responsive to everybody else's ideas as we go through the assessment of the over 2,000 bills we expect to see in the 2025 session. I can't even remember what year it is. After that, we have the section on the legislative priorities. These are key areas of focus as guided by your Board through discussions at multiple work sessions, as well as our subject matter experts and leadership here at the county. And then finally, we have what we call service-specific guiding principles. These allow for our departments to do further analysis on those said 2,000-plus bills with specific lenses that they have been able to bring to your Board and have approved as how we make sure that those policies meet your goals as we take positions or action on those items. And with that, I'll turn it over to Pablo.
Great. Thank you, Erin. So yeah, this slide, it's a busy slide.
Could you introduce yourself?
Oh, my apologies. Yes, Pablo Nieves Valenzuela, Government Relations Manager for Washington County. So this slide, as Erin was just indicating, this is our first priority, and it focuses on our unfunded and underfunded mandates, I should say. The top line here is to secure stabilized and sustainable funding for services that the state requires the county to provide, and that really targets those unfunded, underfunded mandates, specifically calling out community corrections, assessment and taxation, law libraries, as well as funding for substance use-related, abuse-related issues. So you may recall the last version we presented to you had a copy and paste error, and that has been resolved in this version that you're seeing today. So the next priority, it focuses on the need to increase investment in our county workforce. Again, everything here should be familiar to you all, but the top line is develop policies to enable the county to recruit and retain the talent necessary for communities to thrive.
Commissioners, as we continue our work expanding affordable housing opportunities for our community, a top priority is maintaining current affordable housing stock and ensuring that we have the resources to support residents facing possible rent increases or evictions. In the 25th session, we will work with stakeholders to develop funding sources to support residents facing affordable expirations. Additionally, this next priority is focused on advancing legislation to modernize the process for annexation of 100% consent-based special district annexations, essentially allowing the county to increase responsiveness to the community and increase approval timelines for property owners and developers.
So thank you, Carly. This priority highlights the need to recoup timber revenue for all local taxing districts that will be impacted through implementation of the state's Habitat Conservation Plan. Again, this one should be familiar to you all and certainly is connected to the work that Commissioner Willie has been doing with AOC and with the Governor's Office.
Okay, great. Steal the clicker back. Okay. So you'll see in front of you the proposed state legislative guiding principle for Clean Water Services. So similar to our federal guiding principles, we also have a state guiding principle that helps us navigate legislation that we may encounter and may not have foreseen going into the 2025 legislative session. Clean Water Services has nine proposed state legislative priorities for the 2025 legislative session. The first, and you'll see that there are many that are similar to the federal work that we're going to be doing, certainly advocating for additional investment in water-related infrastructure. We've seen a lot of great momentum, again, in this area, and there continues to be a lot of good momentum and energy around these investments. This is a budget year for state agency budgets, so we'll be working on the DEQ Water Quality Division budget and making sure there's strategic investments that we need to see in order to do the work that we need to do as a utility. Advancing water reuse, also in our state legislative agenda, and we're having already really good conversations, a lot of interest about how the state can better support those types of projects. That final priority here, before I get to the next slide, is promoting resource recovery. So that would include things like nutrient recovery, energy production, and water reuse as well. This is why I should not have the clicker. Okay. The final five priorities, we are looking to gain additional data and research, including funding for research of emerging contaminants, particularly in the state of Oregon. Advancing opportunities for readiness around water infrastructure for industrial and commercial expansion opportunities. Preserving our local financing tools, which continues to be a significant priority for us, including things like system development charges. Supporting efforts to enhance our overall water utility responsiveness, efficiency, and resiliency. And then finally, we'll be engaging in housing conversations, especially that are related to water infrastructure delivery. And with that, I believe I'm handing it over to Carly.
Yeah. Thanks, Tracy. So now we're going to move into the capital project priority section of the state agenda. Oh. Oh. Oh, there we go. Sorry. Okay. So the first project on our list is the courthouse replacement planning project. As you know, we're requesting $1.25 million in matching state funds to begin that project. Our existing courthouse is seismically vulnerable, and it's far too small to hold the number of judges and staff that we need to ensure that cases are adjudicated without delay for community members seeking justice through our court. So we're really hoping to secure that funding in this session.
And for the additional projects on our list, at the Walnut Street Center, we are going to be asking the state legislature for $20.2 million for crucial seismic and HVAC upgrades, which will help ensure that we can maintain crucial emergency services at times of need. The next item on the list is a proposal in which we plan to ask for $1.7 million in state funds to match $1.7 million federal grant from the Bureau of Reclamation that will allow us to develop a new visitor center to serve the community at Scoggins Creek. And the final one is a wonderful, exciting update to our Fairgrounds complex, and that we will be asking the state legislature for support in the total of $15 million, which will help realize the dream of achieving our goal to complete the phase of 1B of the Fairgrounds, which will provide infrastructure, new barns, and space for our great 4-H horse and livestock programs. Thank you.
Clean Water Services has identified a project that we will be working with legislature to seek funding for, and that is Western Washington County Inflow and Infiltration Rehabilitation Project. That is a project where we receive federal funding, but in an amount that is not sufficient to get the improvements and reductions that we need. We have a lot of really aging pipes out in that area that are leaking, and we need to replace a significant amount of those pipes in order to make sure that we're not overwhelming our water resource recovery facility out in Forest Grove. So we'll be working with the legislature on that request.
And with that, we return this to your Board to take action if you so approve of this agenda, and we will work to enact it and bring these resources home.
Thank you, team. What you've presented tonight matches the information we've discussed and refinements from at least four different work sessions as recently as November 5. Are there any, Commissioner, questions, comments, or motion to adopt these proposed drafted agendas?
Move to adopt.
We have a motion to adopt the 2025 federal legislative agenda and the 2025 state legislative agenda for Washington County and Clean Water Services. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously four to zero. Job well done. Onward ho you go to a new Congress and to the 2025 state legislature. Thank you very much for continuing to do the work on behalf of not only Clean Water Services and our Washington County government, but to all of the ratepayers and residents within our county and Tuolton River watershed. Next, we'll move on to public comment. This is our second public comment session for tonight's meeting. This is an opportunity for members of our community to come and address the Board for up to five minutes, an individual, up to 30 minutes maximum, on any topic you would like to speak to. Clerk Moss, do we have anyone who wishes to do so?
We do, Madam Chair. So the first two are Elaine Woods and Kevin Pate.
going to wait until we have the materials, because five minutes is a lot longer than two minutes. Thank you. Elaine Woods, could you start us off, please?
Thank you, Chair Harrington and County Commissioners. My name is Elaine Woods, and I've been a resident of Washington County for over 12 years. In any voting system, and especially vote by mail, accurate voter rolls are fundamental to a trustworthy election. Yet after much analysis, local, statewide, and national groups have concluded that the Oregon Centralized Voting Registration System, OCVR, the database which has cost taxpayers more than $20 million is anything but accurate and by every indication corrupted. You have before you a copy of the Election System Overview, a document developed by the Oregon Secretary of State, which shows a diagram of our election system. In the gray box at the bottom center of the page, you can see all the things the database is used for. In addition to voter registration, it's used for things like election management, candidate filing, DMV, and voter searches, et cetera. To perform these functions, it's accessed directly by a host of agencies, organizations, and vendors. The state entities with access include county election workers, ORSTAR, the Oregon Election System for Tracking and Reporting, and the DMV, which has been hacked and has many problems, as we know. All other entities that interact directly with the database are outside third-party vendors and organizations. Vendors use the database for vote tabulation, scanning geographic information systems, ballot sorting, printing and mailing, and election results reporting. Three other entities with access are the American Association for Motor Vehicle Administrators, which provides real-time verification of information printed on a U.S. driver's license or ID card. Their website states that their service only confirms that information on a license or ID card matches what is registered in the DMV database. However, it cannot confirm if the license itself is real, or if the license is fake but has correct information overlaid, if the license is being used by the person who owns it, or if the signature or photo are a verified match. So basically, it can't really authenticate identification. Second is the USPS National Change of Address Database, which provides the state with change of address information. And finally, there's ERIC, the Electronic Registration Information Center, which is supposed to manage the voter registrations and will be addressed separately. In 2010, county clerks reported that the centralized database was at the weak point in our election system. But instead of changing the overall process, in 2021, the Secretary of State contracted with Know Inc., a 2019 technology startup, to develop a new Oregon Registration Voter Information System, or ORVS. The initial contract was for more than $11 million. It has grown to more than $20 million, and Know Inc. products have been problematic nationwide. In 2023, Gartner Incorporated, a well-respected American technological research and consulting firm, reviewed the new database, determined that it had structural issues and could not be deployed for the 2024 elections. Despite this, the new database was piloted in six counties beginning in May 2024. Washington County was not among them. ORVS is still expected to go live statewide in February 2025. Structural issues aside, Item 46.16 of the Know Inc. agreement states, "The system shall allow the county election staff to override the results if necessary." But in what situation would it ever be appropriate for election staff to override election results? This item even got national media attention. The U.S. Elections Assistance Commission does not certify or provide detailed security requirements for centralized voter registration systems because they present continuous data security challenges. So effectively, there are no security standards. We, the people, did not authorize the sharing of all our personal information, including signatures, with these vendors and outside organizations. It is certainly unethical. Is it legal? We ask you to use your authority via Home Rule or any other method to disconnect Washington County citizens from the centralized database and manage our voter registrations locally, please, and thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pate, go right ahead. Thank you. Mr. Pate, go right ahead.
Chair Harrington and Commissioners, my name is Kevin Pate. I've been a resident of Washington County for 30 years. Since 2014, our voter rolls have been managed by the Electronic Registration Information Center, ERIC, a membership organization with two stated missions: one, to clean voter rolls, and two, to increase voter registration. ERIC is a nonprofit founded in 2012 by Pew Charitable Trust with funding from the George Soros Open Society Foundation. To join the organization, each state pays an initiation fee of $25,000 plus annual dues. To date, Oregon has paid ERIC about $400,000 for their services. That is $400,000 plus our private information, including, and this is from the agreement, all names, all addresses, driver's license or state ID number, last four digits of social security number, date of birth, activity dates as defined by the Board of Directors, whatever that is, current record status, affirmative documentation of citizenship, the type of affirmative documentation of citizenship, phone number and email address, or other electronic contact method. Please note that ERIC requires records only from those who affirm they are U.S. citizens. Since self-attestation is a type of affirmative documentation of citizenship, this does not identify and remove any falsely or accidentally registered non-citizens from the voter rolls. Consider our recent challenges with the DMV claiming the accidental registrations of non-citizens. Regarding data access, the ERIC website states, "ERIC is never connected to any state voter registration system. Members retain complete control over the voter rolls." This is completely false. We were informed directly by a Secretary of State's office and is also shown on the election systems diagram that ERIC has direct access to the database. Why does ERIC lie? Further, regarding privacy and use of data, Oregon's agreement with ERIC states, "The member, Oregon, and ERIC shall use their best efforts to prevent the unauthorized use or transmission of any private or protected member data." Best efforts? That's as far as ERIC will go in terms of promising no unauthorized use or transmission of our data. However, even if Oregon is legally obligated to share ERIC's information, it has to first obtain a court order and provide a copy of that court order to ERIC. Most of the agreement involves ERIC's second stated mission, increasing voter registration. ERIC has several requirements of the state, including contracting a certain number of eligible or possibly eligible people to vote within a given deadline, applying best efforts to ensure that any eligible voter whose registration may have been inaccurately processed casts a ballot that will be counted, applying best efforts to register voters over the Internet with no paper registration, and achieving more fully automated voter registration transactions to be performed at state agencies. There is only one item in the agreement remotely associated with ERIC's first stated mission of cleaning the voter rolls, and that is, when ERIC sends a list of voters with a record that may be inaccurate or out of date, the state has 90 days to initiate contact with at least 95% of those on the list and either correct the inaccuracy or inactivate or update the voter's record. Inactivate? Nowhere in the agreement is there ever any reference to removing voters from the rolls. In February 2023, Alabama Secretary of State Wes Allen made an unannounced visit to the ERIC headquarters in Washington, D.C. and found that the location was the home of a virtual shared workspace and that no ERIC headquarters existed at the location. This untrustworthy and shadowy organization appears to be more about getting its hands on our data and bloating, not managing or cleaning, our voter rolls, and they are calling the shots. The agreement provides 10 instances in which the state can lose its membership for not following ERIC's demands. However, the only way to terminate ERIC is through non-payment. Currently, 26 states do not use ERIC, and of those, eight have left since 2022. To maintain privacy of information and accurate voter rolls is mandatory that Washington County apply Home Rule to disengage from the centralized system and manage voter registrations locally. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pate. Clerk Moss, who do we have next?
Yes, next we have Jill Latre and Karen Schmidlin.
Clerk Moss, what you've just handed to us, is that from Ms. Latre or from Ms. Schmidlin? Thank you very much. Ms. Latre, you're first?
Good evening, Chair Harrington and Commissioners. My name is Jill Latre, a Washington County resident for over 30 years. I've been tracking the November 2024 voter turnout numbers for Washington County since late October. I've given you copies of several voter turnout printouts and summarized the information on a spreadsheet. I noticed as the days progressed, on some dates, the previously reported numbers of ballots received changed, both increasing and decreasing. If I wouldn't have printed and downloaded these reports, the previous day's totals would be changed, and there would be no way to track the changes made. The numbers sometimes change by only a few ballots, and sometimes they change by the thousands. The numbers may have changed the following day or up to 14 days later, as happened on the latest November 14th update. Many numbers changed on that last report. In addition to the numbers changing, the totals for each report are not accurately added. The difference may be off by 1, hundreds, or even 2,700,000 ballots, as it currently states on the latest Washington County voter turnout. That report has been on the website since November 14th. That particular number seems to be a typo with an extra zero in it, but that does not explain all the other addition problems on the previous reports. I found the same type of changes and addition errors on the May 2024 voter turnout numbers, but not nearly the number I saw during this current election. I've also included true printouts from the Oregon Secretary of State website. These ballot return numbers also differ from Washington County's numbers, with the latest results showing Washington County reporting an additional 40,000-plus ballots received as compared to Washington County's number on the Secretary of State website. Another concern I have with the voter turnout is the number of ballots received by mail after Election Day. In March 2024, Election Officer Manager Dan Forrester reported to the Commissioners he believed this number to be a few hundred ballots on the previous elections. Two weeks ago, we brought to your attention the number of mailed-in ballots actually reported received by Washington County seven days after the date of an election. We also pointed out the fact that mailed-in ballots do not require a postal indicator to be accepted, according to House Bill 3291. In light of the information being shared today, I believe those numbers are worth repeating. The May 2022 election had 11,348 ballots received and 10,538 accepted, which was 7% of the total. In November 2022, 4,189 ballots were received. In the February 2024 King City recall election, 73 ballots were accepted after Election Day, which was 4% of that total. The final May 2024 primary voter turnout report for Washington County showed that 9,685 ballots were received seven days after Election Day. I've been in the election office observing for multiple days during this election. On Wednesday, November 6th, the day after the election, I personally asked Dan Forrester how many ballots arrived in the mail that day. Mr. Forrester reported four trays arrived by mail and another three or four trays from other counties. The voter turnout report ballots received on November 6th says five. Five ballots, not five trays. Another observer and eyewitness, two more large trays arriving from the United States Postal Service on Tuesday, November 12th. The voter turnout report ballots received on November 12th says two ballots, not two trays. According to the voter turnout, the total number of ballots received in this election, the seven days after Election Day, is 24 ballots. This number is minuscule in comparison with the previous elections, and it does not make sense, according to the ballots being reported by Dan Forrester and also personally being seen and delivered by the United States Postal Service after Election Day. Our county election office is tasked with accurately collecting ballots and tallying the votes, which decide elections locally and statewide. The changes and variations and the incorrect addition on these ballot reports cause much concern. How are we supposed to trust the election results when these numbers do not add up or make sense? The election office is overwhelmed with hundreds of thousands of ballots. It's difficult for them to process the ballots in a timely manner, ensuring accurate reporting. Our confidence in the process and the results is shaken, if not shattered. Please decentralize this process and return to the precinct level to cast and tally our votes. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ms. Schmidlin, please go ahead.
Good evening, Chair Harrington and Commissioners. I'm sorry I didn't bring copies tonight. I missed that part. My name's Karen Schmidlin, a 40-year-plus resident of Washington County, and I appreciate your service on this board. I've talked about some of the technicalities, and you've heard a lot of numbers and those kind of things in recent meetings. But today, I'd like to share with you some conversations that I've had with voters. I am a PCP, an elected precinct committee person, and part of what I do as a PCP is I knock on doors of voters in my district, and I share information with them about the candidates that I'm supporting. And as you probably know, there are many non-affiliated voters who are not registered with any party, and as part of my door-knocking, I speak with many of them. In the weeks leading up to the current election, and I say current because although Election Day was November 5th, we're still counting ballots for several more days, actually a couple more weeks. I was surprised to hear from many of the people that they would prefer to vote on one day in person in their precinct. The comments they made were completely spontaneous and not elicited by me in any way. They just came out with these things. I was there to talk with them about the candidates and to remind them to be sure to vote. One young woman who had recently moved from Hawaii asked why we didn't vote in person, like she did back home. She talked about how nice it was to go to the polling place and see the welcoming face of somebody she recognized from the community who checked her ID and looked her up in the poll book. And then she would run into lots of people that she knew from her neighborhood, and they would visit and catch up and discuss other things that were going on in their community as they were standing in line. And then they would have the results that same night. She said she just didn't understand why we wouldn't do it that way here in Oregon. In another instance, a man who had immigrated here from Ukraine several years ago was playing ball in the street with his young children. He said he came here to get away from all the corruption in Ukraine, but he sees many of the same things going on here, and he is very concerned about this. He said there was no way to really trust the elections when ballots go through the mail. He said that if you don't have secure elections, then you won't have a sovereign country. Another man who came here from Africa said he wants to vote, but he is here on a green card. And so he told me that everyone in his country votes in one day, and they dip their finger in ink once they've voted so they cannot vote more than once. It's very simple, but you know, it works. An older woman told me she still received ballots for her three adult children that all moved out of state more than 10 years ago. She said that she doesn't trust our system because there are so many unused ballots out there, just like her children's. She would prefer to vote in person on one day and not have to worry about those ballots. These were just some of the most memorable stories. There were several other people who said in one way or another that they would have a lot more trust in our elections if they were in person. And this lack of trust shows that voters are feeling disenfranchised and are hesitant to vote. I remind you again, I never said any things to these people about our voting system. They just brought these things up on their own. So the people who shared their concerns with me are not here this evening. They are busy working, taking care of their families, paying their bills, managing their property, and all the other things that people do. I mean, there's not a lot of people that aren't here, of course. They don't even know what can be done to resolve these issues, but it is enough on their mind that they would spontaneously bring it up to a total stranger who knocks on their door. That was me. They just, they're upset. They wish someone would do something to fix the situation and are anxious to tell anyone they think may be in a position to make a difference. So I and other elected officials and members of the public are here in this and other commissioner meetings to represent all of the people out there in our county and to let you know they do not have faith in our elections, and neither do we. As our form of government requires, we, as elected officials and leaders in our communities, are serving our constituents by bringing these matters to you, our county leaders. We are seeking your support in addressing the issues and enreving the situation. We have repeatedly asked for a work session and for a meaningful dialogue on these issues to work towards a solution. We have even proposed some solutions, but to date, our requests and our suggestions have been met with silence. So we're asking, what are you prepared to do to respond to the issues expressed by your constituents? Will you please represent us? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schmidlin.
Right. The last two we have, Madam Chair, for our 30 minutes, is Ayla Hoffler and John Woods.
Save the slow boats for last.
It's hard getting old, especially when it's raining.
That's right. We made it, didn't we?
Chair Harrington and Commissioners, thank you for providing us with this time for public testimony. My name is Ayla Hoffler. I have lived in the Banks, Oregon, area for 50 years. I am testifying today in support of precinct voting. In 2022, I canvassed the residential areas of Forest Grove, targeting voter roll information that was curious. For example, six to 12 voters at the same address. In just four hours, going door-to-door, I became acutely aware of the disparity of registered voters and their residency. There were people who no longer or never lived at designated addresses. There were addresses assigned to voters where there was no structure. This indicated to me that the voter rolls of Washington County have not been updated in decades. This leaving free-floating ballots are at severe risk of being submitted illegally. Without showing real ID and registering in person, we cannot rely solely on signatures to verify citizenship. There are too many variations of a signature, and checking signatures after the person had voted is too late. Registering online or at the DMV with nothing more than a utility bill and a driver's license is insufficient. In the last four years, our nation's open borders have put our elections at risk even more. Birth certificates are one of the least expensive documents to forge. Passports are the only true document that can verify citizenship. My suggestion is that every resident in Washington County receive a voucher for a passport every 10 years. They can come up and apply for free. This will be cheaper than the voting machines and serve every citizen well. My other experience with voting in Oregon is related to voting in our local precinct. We had voting precincts, we have had voting precincts statewide for decades. Their purpose was to make it easy for residents in that precinct to show up locally, to verify themselves in person to others who live there, and to vote. It was a great time to gather in person, share discussions in person, foster a sense of belonging, pause for a moment in gratitude for the right to vote, and feel a bit of pride participating in such a meaningful event. This human experience has been taken away, separating us, isolating us, and creating apathy, and not to mention local control of voting. Elections belong to the people. Precinct voting provides heightened voter ID, more accurate and secure ballot certification, and overall accountability. It is the true sense of chain of custody sought after in the election process. It is more transparent process and is more cost-effective. Local volunteers It is rewarding to each and every community when voter participation, where voter participation is encouraged, and successful voter turnout is a result in our precincts. Mail-in voting should only be used for serving the disabled and the military and qualified overseas citizens. Every individual and every community make a difference. Let's get back to our roots. And I will add that we all know that things made in a small batch, whether it's good bourbon or cookies, also applies to voting locally in your precinct. We take the time to count and recount. We're proud of what we do in our own communities and turn in the best quality assurance and improvement. You know, we can monitor ourselves best locally. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hoffler. Go ahead, sir.
I'm just using this for my guardrails. If I don't, I'm going to go off the track.
No worries.
Chair Harrington and County Commissioners, my name is John Woods. I have lived in Washington County for 12 years. I'm a professional photographer, and I'm a writer. And I've been published on American Thinker, a multinational political blog and website with 3 million subscribers. Also write on Substack and other social media sites. This gives me a great view of what is happening in other areas of the country, including D.C. Get to look in and see what they're up to. I'm going to speak about something I believe is headed our way. I need at least four, if not five, photo ID cards to function our community. I have a driver's license, concealed carry license, a VA ID card. When I enter a local gun club shooting range, I need not only a photo ID card, but also be certified on the range. I had an ID card when I was in the Navy. I'm hearing that a national ID card is in the works. I just completed an ATF certification. I can say without a doubt that the equipment and software exists to make a national ID happen. All citizens, local leaders, and especially county leaders had better start thinking about what a national ID card will look like here in Washington County. Both political parties need to grasp this proposal before the tsunami arrives on your doorstep. With the immigration problem playing such a large role in the last election, the feds are going to move on this. When they do, it will fall into your laps to implement it. They will provide the funds, plus the rules, on what this ID card will look like. The world changed on November 6, 2024, and I expect huge policy directives, including what I think will be a national ID card. The change is coming. What it looks like is unclear, but it is coming. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Clerk Moss. That concludes our second public comment period for tonight's meeting. Next, we'll move on to board announcements. We will not be having any Board of Commissioner meetings next Tuesday, November 26. Everyone, please have a wonderful Thanksgiving holiday time. Then we're into the month of December. Tuesday, December 3, we'll start our work session at 9:00 a.m., and then pause that. We'll then have our Housing Authority Board of Directors meeting, starting at 10:00 a.m. And then immediately following that, we will have our board meeting, about quarter past 10:00, perhaps. Then on Thursday, December 5, we'll have a roundtable, which starts at 10:00 a.m. Then the following Tuesday, Tuesday, December 10, we'll start our work session at 1:00 p.m., and our board meeting will be at 6:30 in the evening. Then on Tuesday, December 17, we'll have a work session at 9:00 a.m. and a board meeting at 10:00 a.m., and that will be the final meeting for 2024. Then we're into the New Year and the month of January. On Tuesday, January 7, we'll start with the elected official swearing-in ceremony to swear in Commissioner Fai, excuse me, for her second term, and our incoming new Commissioner, Jason Snyder. Following that, we'll have the Housing Authority Board of Directors meeting at 10:00, and subsequent to that, immediately following that meeting, we'll start the board meeting. We'll have a no-work session that day. We'll have a roundtable on Thursday, January 9, and the following Tuesday, January 14, work session only starts at 9:00 a.m. Those are all the board announcements I have. Are there any other board announcements from my colleagues? Seeing none, I'd like to ask for a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting. It's almost... A second. Thank you. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of adjourning the Tuesday, November 19, 2024 meeting, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously, 4 to 0. We are hereby adjourned. Drive safe, everybody.